I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Information Pastor?
Father, we pray in the name of Jesus, our government, our community leaders, our city, our town, nation. Father, we pray that you just give those in a form of wisdom on every decision, help them be clear, grant them deserving, common sense, and they will be strong and effective leaders. Father, help them to govern, help them to lead with integrity, that they may keep the integrity of our city on track. Father, we pray that you be merciful, give us leaders who are spiritual, follow your principles, direct their steps according to your word, for their decisions have great impact on our lives. Be their defenders and their protectors, be their guardians, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Marissa, can you do roll call, please?
Good evening, Mayor Neal.
Here.
Mayor Proten Billingsley.
Here.
Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Blair.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going on in the public comment. If anybody want to come to the podium, state your name, address, where you from, give you three minutes. How about Emmanuel Lopez?
Hello, Council, for everybody that doesn't know me, I'm from West Hills College in Moore, I'm part of the student government. So, all the new people, I haven't been here in a while, so also to the public, I just want to announce.
I'm sorry, I'm having a tough time hearing you. Can you move up the mic just a little bit there? Could you turn it up, Marissa?
Hello?
Yeah, we got you now, thank you.
So, I'm from the college, I'm from student government, I'm the ambassador, co-chair of the Student Senate, state delegate, and also regional delegate as well. I just want to inform you guys that we just had Food Day, the twenty-third of last month. We gave out more than four thousand pounds of food, and it's been very consistent ever since we took over that event. So, it's helping to the community, if anybody wants flyers, I got some flyers to give out to anybody. It's a wonderful experience, also we get to bond with the community, and also we're trying to figure out for next semester events, so the community could come, so students and the community could be involved in a bigger setting. Also, I'm here to promote a new program, well, a program that's at the college. It's called HEP, it's the high school, it's like a high school diploma program, but they could take it at the college. It's basically for... A lot of favors. It's for seasonal farm workers and also migrants. So, they could, well, with, well, some of the requirements are that the past twenty-four months, they have to work a minimum of seven-five days in a migrant or seasonal farm work. It's, I think it's a great idea, so if you guys really want to promote it out there for seasonal farm workers, migrants that want to go to school, want to get like a GED, they could go and go to the college, sign up. It's open anytime, so I could give you people more information about it if they want to learn about it. I have the application here, if they want to look at the application, they basically, it's like if you're applying for a scholarship, you have to send an essay saying why you want it, why you should be considered in for the program and things like that. So, also, that's a good thing we're offering at the college, so we're trying to expand to the community, so more people could come to the college and be better set in the workforce, or go higher than where they are now. So, that's a good thing. Also, I just want to announce that I decided not to run for ambassador of the college next semester. I've decided, for personal reasons, to be more attached to my family, because I haven't seen them. For the past month, I have only seen them for a month, so I've decided not to run. So, next semester, there'll be somebody new in my position, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, I tell you what, I wish you could have more time, but hey, that's a great thing you're doing at West Hills College. It's great over there, and you go ahead and give her, Marissa, the cards, and she can give them to us, okay?
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, anyone else on public comment in the audience? Mr. Rogers, all right, there you go.
Ed Rogers, nine-five-one Tranquility Court. Before you think I'm crazy, let me finish with this ordeal, okay? It's a positive note in the City of Lamoore coming up. Everyone has a bucket list in life, okay? Mine's a little twisted, but it's okay. Hey, I'm going on a dizzy cruise in May with my grandkids, but I asked Nathan Olson, the city manager, got permission, went through all the proper paperwork with the individuals involved here, and I spent six hours on one of your trash trucks the other day as a ride-along. And let me tell you, if you've never ridden in a refuge truck, it's an experience, you can learn about your town. It's an experience. Number one, don't ever say your trash people are lazy, but them guys worked their butts off.
Who'd you ride with?
I'm sorry about the French.
Ed, who'd you ride with, Ed?
I rode with Paul Acosta.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, was that, was that a plant? Paul was great, Paul Acosta was great. He didn't stop talking for six hours, and neither did I. I don't know how we got cans picked up, but we talked a lot. But I got to go through the whole route with him, and we went through the green waste and dropped it off, and cycled back out, and come and got the black cans and stuff, and it's amazing where, most of the people in this town are good about where they put their cans, three foot away from the curb, three foot apart, they're pretty good about it. And those others, they put them how close they can get them, how close they can get them next to their car. But let me tell you, if you've ever been to Disneyland, and then the California Venture Park, and there's a ride called Cars, you ever been to it, been on it? I felt like I was in Cars, okay? I'm in a trash truck, going through the neighborhood, and all of a sudden, vroom, trash truck comes by me, pulls in, grabs the cans in front of us, Paul goes, vroom, pulls out a round and gets it. What those guys were doing is, the other guy finished his route, he jumped over to help Paul in teamwork, so we could all head to the waste center together. That's frigging teamwork, they didn't do that for me, that's teamwork. And let me tell you, negotiating some of the places they negotiate, I didn't know in this town, maybe you do, maybe you don't, because you're campaigning for your positions, but you know, we have houses in this town that face alleys? Did you know that, I looked at my mirror and I pulled my arm in so it wouldn't get red over? That's how tight it was, that trash truck getting down the alley? Those people live there. My house off of the fire, I'm gonna take a fire truck down there. There's not much room, but there's brand-new houses built facing alleyways in this town, if you've never been through it. It's pretty interesting complex. I got to go to the break, I know the red light's on, that's okay. I got to come over here to the break room with them and sit and have their lunch break with them and talk to all the other guys. And it was fun, it was fun. I told them, they all laughed, I said, hey, maybe next time there's a city manager's job, I'll apply. I said, no way I want that job. But anyhow, it was a fun thing to do. But it was a fun experience, and my, my plan here in the next eighteen months is try to hit all the departments in this town, and see what the employees do, to have more of a feedback for the employees, and what's a better way to understand what they do. You should get me right now, aren't you?
Oh, it's okay, Mr. Ed.
I'll ride the trash the next week.
All right, Mr. Rogers, hey, we appreciate a Del moment with you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, God bless.
It was fun.
All right. All right, going on to ceremony and presentation, section one, no ceremonies and presentations, Department and City Manager Report, section two, two-dash-one, Department and City Manager Report.
Did you, did you mention D?
Oh, Agenda Approval additions or deletions? Any deletions? Good, I see none, okay. I was going a little bit too fast. Okay, let's go on to City Manager Reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, we have three reports tonight, we'll start with Chief Daryl Smith.
So, I have to follow Mr. Rogers, that's not fair. So, each year, in conjunction with the Lamoore Recreation Department, the Lamoore Police Department, get together and we pay tribute, and we honor volunteerism in our great community. So, on February twenty-first, you're all invited to attend the Volunteer Appreciation Dinner, it's at the Rec Center. Last year, I think we were able to feed about three-hundred-and-fifty people. It's a great opportunity for us as staff to actually serve the people that serve our community every day. It's an opportunity for them to come and receive awards and recognition, which they don't want anything to do with recognition, we have to force them to be there.
Absolutely.
But we'd love for you guys to attend. Mayor Neal, in tradition, you have to open up with a few words and a song, so you might want to think about your song choice before then, so.
Please, be easy.
I don't want to make you nervous.
Be easy on me now.
Anyway, we'd love to see you guys all out there.
Absolutely, and you guys are doing, the volunteers, they're doing a great job out there, just take on that responsibility. I remember going out there one time, it was a joyride, but it wasn't a joyride to me, I was on pins and needles, I mean, it's Lamoore, it looks like it's sleeping all the time, but it's always going, so kudos to them.
We hope to see you out there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, Ms. Judy Hallwell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I just want to give you some updates on development in our community. So, planning approved a site plan for Anthony Rodriguez, it's out in the industrial park on Iona, west of Vine Street, between Vine and Nineteenth Avenue, and that's going to be a business park. It's just over nineteen thousand square feet, three buildings. So, hopefully, we'll get some of the building plans in soon and get that all approved, and hopefully, he can start on that soon. But the site plan's been approved. You've seen some homes under construction, new, new projects out on the west, south side of Highway one-ninety-eight, that's G.J. Gardner Homes, they're under construction, as well as still under construction is Woodside Homes out on the east side, and Lenar up on the north side of Hanford-Amona Road. Lenar, in their conditions of approval, they were required to put the block wall in, which you've probably all seen on Hanford-Amona Road. That block wall is supposed to, every one hundred feet, have some kind of a vertical element, so we've been in contact with them, so that they can put in like a pilaster or some kind of decoration. So, they'll, you'll see that coming soon. Grocery Outlet has been looking at Gateway Plaza, which is the old Pioneer Square of Hanford-Amona Road and Lamoore Avenue. They've submitted an application for a conditional use permit to sell alcohol there. So, I assume that they've signed their lease agreement, but I'm not sure, because sometimes they want to get their approvals first to make sure that they can sell alcohol, so we'll probably be seeing that come forward soon. We've approved a temporary use permit for Kids' Day newspapers, that's going to be, they're going to be on the corners March fifth. That's for Valley Children's Hospital, it's a fundraiser for them. Cedar Lane, Cedar Lane, we've talked for years about extending from its current location out, it's about, it's just east of Vine Street currently, and then extending it to Lamoore Avenue. We've been talking about the need to extend it to Lamoore Avenue, because the, the fear was that once the Nineteenth Avenue interchange went in, and they closed Vine Street to one-ninety-eight, we thought there was going to be a lot of traffic congestion in that area, on Vine Street, and then Champion, and all that area. Well, it hasn't really happened, so we're looking at taking the requirement out of the general plan to have Cedar Lane a collector street from Vine to Lamoore Avenue. And, and I've got more information.
Go ahead.
Give me just a little bit more. So, that just means that the designation of a collector street would be removed. There wouldn't be, there's not a requirement still, there wouldn't be a requirement to build the road, but if we decide to build it, it could still be built to local street standards. And the reason why this has come up, we've got an application for the Old Beto's Restaurant. There's a new restaurant that wants to come in with a drive-through. If we put the drive-through in where the alignment of Cedar Lane is, is, it would interfere with a drive-through. Also, there's a new owner for the Car Wash that wants to do a commercial development there, and this alignment of Cedar Lane would also interfere there. So, we're going to, we took that to the Planning Commission, they've approved a resolution to recommend to you to, to approve taking the, the collector street status off of Cedar Lane. That's going to be coming to you during your next council meeting on February nineteenth, that will be a public hearing, but I wanted to give you just a little brief explanation of that before it actually comes to you. And then, you've had, you've approved a couple of murals, the one on the Oddfellow's Building has been painted, it's there. The other one was the Ceremonial Museum, that mural, they're looking for a new location. It was approved for the Kings County Office of Education, but that not worked out, because they want them to change the mural. So, they're actually looking for a new location, so because you've approved it at that location, we, once they find a new location, we'll bring that back to you for approval. And then, we will be bringing some mural guidelines to a study session, a future study session for you to look at and review, and then direct staff to, you know, approve some guidelines.
Okay.
So, there you go.
I have a question for you. You were talking about, I think that's Hanford-Amona Road and Pioneer Square. What location that's going to be at, where the alcohol?
That will be north of Dollar General. So, you got In-Shape Dollar General, and then there's a, a large building that, that Grocery Outlet is looking at.
Okay. Another thing, on Cedar Lane?
Yes.
And Nineteenth, that's going to go all the way through by, by Bellfell's, is, was, would that, are you going to go through that field right through there, the Cedar Lane where Brooks Drive is?
Cedar Lane was scheduled to go through that field.
That's what I was, okay.
Yes, and so, what this would do is just remove the collector street status from it.
Is it still going through that street?
It could still go through.
Okay, it's not, it's not for sure, then?
It's not for sure.
Okay.
So, that's what we'll bring to you at the next council meeting, and we can have more discussion then.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Anyone?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gleck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, just a few events I'm going to give you an update on. The Father and Daughter Dance is this Saturday at the CMC. At six o'clock, we already sold seventy-five tickets, so we're, we're pretty excited about that. Also, on Friday night, last Friday night, this event was canceled because of the rain, and it still could be canceled because of rain this weekend. We have Ladies Night in the Saddle, we've already sourced, you get a riding lesson and dinner. It's at the Circle T Ranch, and this event's from six-thirty to ten. Also coming up, Chief Smith mentioned the volunteer dinner, again, everyone's invited on Thursday, February twenty-first. And then, on Saturday, March second, we have the Paso Robles Wine Trip. It starts, we start at the Recreation Center on Saturday.
From the S and P on our bond, but I'd like to thank staff for all the hard work to get this thing to where it was, so, Michelle Spear, Linda Byersdorf, Jocelyn, and Amanda, they worked hours on end, a lot of meetings to get the data. And Michelle said earlier, she had a nickel for every email she got from the, for the, for the bond that we wouldn't need a bond, she could just donate it to the city and we pay for it. So, it's been a huge effort, a huge undertaking, I truly appreciate staff's work on getting this done, thank you. Oh, yes, sorry, Mayor Neal just reminded me, so well number ten has been in flux a little bit. It's the well that we were just going to go do some routine maintenance, and it snapped due to some subsidence on the casing. They were successfully able to fish all the pieces out of it as of two days ago. So, meetings are underway, how we can get that well back in shape, but that.
How much did, how much did we save on that, saving that well?
Seven figures, I can tell you that. A new well's a couple million bucks to drill, so this well we can repair. It's going to cost a little bit more than what we anticipated, but it won't be anywhere near drilling a new well, so happy about that.
Thank you, sir. Okay, going on, moving on, Consent Calendar, section three, three-dash-one, Approval Minutes, regular meeting, January fifteenth, twenty-nineteen. Three-dash-two, Approval Minutes, Special Meeting, January twenty-ninth, twenty-nineteen. Does anybody want to expound on that, want to pull anything, any council members? I see there's none, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve three-one and three-two.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Lyons, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
I vote aye. Moving on. Okay, going on to public hearing. Four-dash-one, Resolutions Twenty-Nineteen oh-three, Track nine-twenty, ordinance annexing and inclusion of the additional territories of Zone Nine of Public Facilities Maintenance District Number One, and confirming the diagram of assessment of annual levy for fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty for the additional territories annexed to the including as Zone Nine of Public Facilities Maintenance District Number One. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open it to the public, go ahead.
It's Ms. Byersdorf is presenting this.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening again, Mayor and Councilmembers. Item four-dash-one is a public hearing for the annexation of Track nine-twenty into the Public Facilities Maintenance District as Zone Nine. At the January fifteenth meeting, City Council approved Resolution Twenty-Nineteen dash oh-one that began the intent to annex Track nine-twenty. Lenar Homes is currently building this tract on the northeastern corner of Hanford-Amona Road and Liberty Drive. Pursuant to Chapter Ten of Title Seventeen of the Lamoore Municipal Code, the city has annually levied special benefit assessments within the PFMD in order to fund in whole or in part the maintenance, operation, and repair of certain public improvements, including landscaping, streetlights, and street paving. The eighty-seven planned single-family residential lots are currently identified by the Kings County Assessor's Office as one parcel, and Lenar Homes is the sole owner of the property. Lenar has waived per petition the forty-five-day waiting period for the ballot. Staff has confirmed that the one ballot has been returned, and the vote will be tabulated tonight after the public hearing. If the ballot submitted is in favor of the proposed annexation, then the added territory may be included in the PFMD, number one is Zone Nine. The maximum assessment for each lot in this zone is seven-hundred-and-forty dollars. Adoption of this resolution will assist in distributing the cost for maintenance of the subdivision to the property owners and not put an additional burden on the general fund.
Can I ask a question?
Well, I'm going, I'm going to go with public comment first.
Mayor and Council, questions are appropriate of staff, but discussion should occur after the public hearing.
It's a question. The question.
Go ahead.
It was just a question. The question just was with the increase, you said seven-hundred-and-forty dollars may be assessed to other property, or the maximum for property owners, are there already property owners who have homes in that property that will be paid?
There are none, they're all new homes.
So, there's none that would be levied at this point right now?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go with public hearings now.
Not really no one here. I was here at the council meeting several months ago, we had the big vote on all these landscape districts, and I heard some of them hadn't been raised in ten years, people paying the same price. How does this tract fall into that? Ten years from now, we're going to be in here? Because you never raised the rates, and the rates go up annually like mine does where I live? What's, what's the process on that? I don't know, I'm asking.
City Manager.
So, with the PFMDs, there's actually an annual inflator that's built in, so you don't run into that problem. So, but that annual inflator can only be imposed or levied if the annual engineer's report warrants it. So, yes, there's provisions and to take care of that.
Okay, so hopefully, ten years from now, we're not discussing this.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else on the public? See there's none? Closing public hearing. Open for council discussion. Anybody on council wanting to discuss this? See there's not? Back to council for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item four-dash-one.
Got a motion by Mr. Billingsley, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Brown, Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
I vote aye. Motion carries, close to the public. Close hearing. Okay, we're going to new businesses, section five. Five-dash-one, Reporting and Recommendations Amendment to City Manager Employment Agreement, Spear?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. In February of twenty-eighteen, Nathan Olson was appointed the permanent city manager for the City of Lamoore under contract. In December of last year, two thousand and eighteen, he was provided with an evaluation, and at that time, he was not provided an opportunity to request a raise. So, Mr. Olson is asking the council, consider a five percent raise of his salary. It would take a salary from a hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars a year to approximately a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars a year, and that falls within the city-approved salary range for the city manager, which tops out at a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand a year. This would be an annual increase to his salary of approximately seventy-two ninety a year, and for the current fiscal year, you would be looking at an approximate three-thousand-dollar increase.
Council, Mayor and Council, just in order to be in compliance with the Brown Act, Ms. Spears has already indicated the amount of money that the proposal, if approved, would be increased. No other benefits would be increased, so that would, that, I needed to make that statement, so that we're in compliance with the Brown Act.
Now's the time to ask questions or make statements.
Okay, council.
I have a statement prepared, and just so you know, I went over it with my attorney first, okay? For tonight, if, I would just like to stay, I do not believe that a raise or contract extension is warranted at this time. We are concerned about the local economy, and that the city management needs to share in the sacrifices that the workers have been asked to take on. And I do believe that anywhere from a hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars plus is more than enough to attract and retain qualified candidates. Additionally, until the ongoing personnel issues are addressed to the satisfaction of the council, no action should be taken, in my opinion. I've moved that we should table the item.
You made a motion, does anybody else want to speak? Is there a second? On that? Motion dies.
I want to speak, I want to speak on this a little bit. Mr. Olson, Mr. Olson is a great man, he loves his family, calm man, good man. Regard to the budget amendment, I would like to see Mr. Olson complete six months with a new council. Because it's not fair with these new guys coming in here, and I think they need to get the feel of the city manager as well. You guys just got on board, and you guys are trying to play catch-up, and I think, I think that'll be only fair to you guys. And another thing is, I want, I want to stress, I would love to see city manager Nathan Olson work with the staff and council relationships, and improve the city public image despite challenges facing the city. So, I think we need to, if we could just sit back and really utilize and think, is this what we really want right now? Or I think these guys need to be where they get the feel of him, and not this us. We've been with him for around, he's doing a good job, but I think it'd be only justice to see the two new council members, see how they work with him.
Can I expand on that a little bit?
Go ahead, sir.
We were able to read the evaluation that, that was done for Mr. Olson, and I agree with, with Mr. Neal that we fully is doing a good job, but at this time, I'd agree that taking six months to, to, to be able to evaluate them more would be beneficial. Like you said, we, we're just coming in, and we weren't part of the last evaluation. So, seeing that, I would, I would agree with you, and if we'd like to make a motion.
Would you like to say something?
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir, you can.
Yeah, I've been working with our city manager ever since he's been on board. I think he's been doing a good job, and I personally feel that, you know, he, for, just like, with him, by his direction and the staff, where he's got the A-plus, you know, helped get that A-plus bond rating, that was big, that saved our city a lot, a lot of money. So, that's just one of the things that he's done, you know, he's worked real hard to try to go out and find what's in our, in our, just what's, what's, what's in our expenditures, and try to bring those back, and try to... what's, what's in our expenditures and try to bring those back, and try to, try to save money, you know? I think that the money he's asking for, I mean, or the money, the five percent is just as, it, to me, it's, it's worth it. I think he deserves it. That's just my opinion, you know? And I'll leave it at that.
Councilman Brown, I really appreciate what you brought in. Yes, like I said before, I stated that he is doing a great job, and as far as that, I am gonna go ahead and move it to the public and have them respond on this a little bit. Public?
Dr. Gail Crum's just a concerned citizen. As a member of this community, Nathan, you do a great job. No doubts about it. You're doing very well. And everyone else is doing a good job, but to give you a five percent raise when the budget was being presented, there were a lot of cuts, and we were told that the reason why a lot of our city is not being kept up was because there was no money to pay these people. So giving you a five percent raise, I do not agree with. I just wanted you to know that, so that can go on record.
Thank you, Dr. Gail. Anyone else? Want to respond on this topic? Dr. Jackson, state your address, your name, where you're from.
Dr. Crystal Jackson, President in the Lacy P.
Thank you.
I just want to know, is there a copy of the new contract?
Yes, the addendum to the contract is in the package.
Do you have a copy tonight?
It's, I have a copy online. I don't have, it was posted with the agenda. Do you have a copy? There's a copy at the, with the clerk, if you want to review it.
Yes, I just, whenever something's brought to the attention of the people, especially dealing with the raise, I would just like to see it. I don't know about everybody else, but...
It was posted with the agenda, and it's on, it's online, as well as available at the clerk's office prior to the meeting, which is what's required by the law.
Do you know how many pages?
It's one.
No, do you know how many pages? This is for the agenda package.
Four hundred and something.
Exactly.
It, to help, to help the public, the agenda is ordered in, to coordinate with the agenda itself, so this is item five dash one, and so you could scroll through to look for five dash one. I just, or if you want something in particular, you may also call the clerk prior to the meeting, and they can provide it to you.
Or we could have it already here, posted just like we have the agenda.
You could. It's a cost savings measure not to do that, and I think that's why we have not, because it would cost, we'd have to copy four hundred and something pages multiple times, and that's why the city posts it electronically.
Question. How much does it cost to post it on our Facebook page, just like we post the agenda?
I don't know that, councilman.
Does it cost anything for us to post things on social media?
No, it is posted on the webpage.
I'm just saying, can we post it on social media as well? Since more people tend to go to the Facebook page than go to the website, if it doesn't cost anything, it's just another click, I think it's a great idea.
That's, if council wants to provide that direction, they can.
When we get done with public comment, we'll go, we'll go and I talk to council.
Okay, because I'm not here to try to antagonize the council.
Absolutely not.
I'm just asking a simple question, because there's, you know, a discussion, and we're talking about money here. When you talk about money, to me, and I run an organization, I want to see the, I want to see the actual contract, so that's why I was asking the question. Just transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the one page that we have on the agenda, if you want to look at it. That's my copy. When you're done.
I thought I seen another hand, Mr. E. There he is.
Tom Reed, ten sixty-five, Lemoore. I really don't have an opinion one way or the other, but it seems to me from the comments made by the council, we have three people not in favor of it, so it kind of seems to be a moot point. And it, and because of the two new council members would like a few more months with Mr. Olson, I think it might be appropriate if you just include this raise with the next cycle of budgeting. It was evidently included in the previous cycle of budgeting, so that would maybe be the appropriate way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Probably won't be a popular comment, but I think, Mr. Olson, you're doing a fine job. I have been to these council meetings for almost a year now, never missed one, sat in the same seat every week, and I listen to the numbers you throw back at this crowd when they ask. I hear tonight you throwing out acronyms and stuff. It's quite obvious to me, you know your job, and that's pretty deep in your job, but that's my opinion, from listening to you. I know how city employees get pay raises. Most city employees, it's not even a question, it's just after six months, after a year, they get step raises. I don't know how all your step raises work, but most city government, that's the way it works. And they're not here tonight, okay? And I'm glad they're not, but my personal opinion, what I see tonight is a political pay raise that you're not getting.
I'd like to comment.
Okay.
So, I understand, and, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinion here, but I would like to say that, you know, the city, to your comment, that things aren't getting done because we don't have the money, that was specifically in regards to the lighting and landscape maintenance districts. So no employee has foregone a raise in the city at all. I will be the first employee this year to be denied a raise based on merit and based on performance. Typically, to Mr. Rogers' point, at your annual raise, if you have a standard or above evaluation, the five percent's automatic. So we'll continue, I'll continue to do my job, no matter how you guys vote, but you know, the whole thing being said about services being cut in LMDs, we have gone out and found ways to bring in in excess of sixty-five thousand dollars of free labor to the city to not let those districts go to heck in a handbasket, because the way you get the money, according to the people that do the engineer's report, is stop all service and make it look horrible, make it look rundown, let it be overgrowth so people don't have a choice because they're so disappointed in how things look. We chose, and the staff chose, not to take that approach, and we find solutions to problems. We'll continue to do that, and that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
May I make a comment? Just a comment, just...
Ms. Blair, go ahead.
At a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year at the contract as it is now, I do not believe that it would be difficult to find or retain other talent in our city, so just wanted to point that out.
Anyone else on the council?
I just want to say, since, you know, as you're stating there, you know, the Proteus workers you went out and got a hold of, they came in and saved a lot of money for LMDs. They cleaned our city up. That was free. That was free labor. I don't know how much that was, I think you stated, I don't know, almost, almost a hundred K, somewhere's in there. And there's, there's numerous, I should have wrote them down, but I think you're doing a good job. I think you deserve it. So...
Anybody else?
Yeah, I agree with every, everything that Mr. Brown said, Mr. Olson himself, and even public comment. However, I'm just having a little heartburn over doing something so hastily, so I'd like just a couple more months to sit back and be able to review the city manager position on my own, not go off of a recommendation basically from a past council. So that, that's, I just want to let everybody know that, that's where I'm at tonight.
Yeah, I kind of stand in the same spot that Chad does. Everything that everybody said is true. I think Nathan does a good job, like both the doctors said, you know, our, our budgets hurting, or so to speak, in not, in a bad way, but I would like a couple months to, to agree with Mr. Neal and Mr. Brown also, and even Holly.
Okay, I want to say something real quick. I sat back and I looked at this, and yes, our city manager's doing a great job, but I'm, I'm just gonna put it like this. We, on these four hundred and eleven pages that we got on a Friday evening, and these guys work hard for a living, they get off work, how long did it take you guys to get four hundred and eleven pages done? And then you come back and want us to make a rash decision? They don't even do that in college. How many pages that in two days, you have to do four hundred and eleven pages, read through it and dissect it, and make sure you got all the ins and outs on it? My constituents who voted me in, who voted me in, that goes for, that goes for me, and if I'm saying something wrong, because I see some heads moving, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna say it like this. It's not fair to the new council that's here, and I'm just being frank with you, it's a lot of things we can, we can point the finger and say, okay, this is what's not going right, this is not going right, this is not adequate. I see right on Vine Street, they had a light pole PG, and they put a light pole up there a year and a half ago. That light pole is still not on. And so I asked in request, why don't they put a light over across the freeway? It's dark over there at night. When you go over there, it's like, it's black over there. You go anywhere else, there's lights. So I'm saying, there's a lot of things that I could say, oh, we can do this, we can do that. We have to, we have to do some more team building. We have to be more together. And this is not, and I'm just gonna say this, I feel within myself, instead of the staff telling, we telling the staff, we telling the city manager what to do sometimes, sometimes it feels like we're working for the staff and the city manager. So it's a lot of things that I'm looking at, and I say, no, let's take our time and do this the right way. I think five or six months, we could, four months, okay? If they wanted to do four months, we could do four months. But let's don't get, don't get it twisted and say, oh, I'm mad because I didn't get in four months. Four months, what's gonna happen, you gonna go bankrupt in four months? I don't think so. Hopefully not, and I just feel that this is what we need to do. I know people say, oh, he's doing a good job and stuff, and I feel he's doing a good job too. They're feeling he's doing a good job? That's good. Kudos to all. But I feel that right now, the new council here, let them, let them be the judge of that. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something, because you did state something. Just want to state that my constituents expect me, when I get this, this agenda, to read it, okay? And that's what I do, I read all four hundred and eleven pages.
In three days? That's good.
Yes, sir, I did. I did, and that's my job as a council member, okay? So they're doing their job. I feel the council, I feel, I feel the staff is doing their job for the Brown Act. They're supposed to release it out on a Friday. They release it out as soon as possible, it's our job to read it. Now, if we don't, I mean, that's, that's, that's the law, okay? And my recommendation is, is if that isn't as inadequate, maybe we need to figure out as a team, as a council, and talk to our city attorney to figure out if we can adjust that, okay? Okay? And if I may, if I'm incorrect, please ask the city attorney.
No, I'm not...
That's all I have to say.
I understand, and I really, I really appreciate what you said, but I am the mayor, and I'm looking at the council as a whole. It's not no strong mayor, but I'm looking at it as a whole, and like I said before, I might put something in place, if we get enough votes, we get something six days prior. We can do that too, instead of two days prior, to reading four hundred pages, to six days prior. We can work that out, or get something going that way. So it's a lot of ways we could swing that door. I'm just saying, let's work together on this, okay? Thank you. Can I get a motion?
On five one.
On this, on five one. Report and Recommendations Amendment of City Manager's Employment Agreement.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve item five dash one as proposed.
I got a motion by Councilman Brown. Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Got a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billsey?
No.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote no. Motion fails. Okay, five dash two, Report and Recommendations Budget Amendment, Create, Creation of the Rate Stabilization Fund. Spear?
I'm gonna be up here a lot tonight, gentlemen and ladies, sorry. So item five dash two is the formation of the rate stabilization fund. So in the study session this evening from our bond team, you heard the presentation about the fact that back in November of twenty seventeen, the council at the time gave city staff the decision and the mandate to move forward and try to secure a water bond, largely for our TTHM compliance project that is going to be used to get us compliant with our state order, which we're under mandate to do by June of twenty twenty. We have been working diligently with the team of individuals, we have bond council underwriters and a municipal advisor who's been helping us through that process. As part of that process, it was recommended to us that we create what's called a rate stabilization fund. And essentially what this does is it moves about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from our water unallocated reserves, it's an enterprise fund, it is not a general fund, into its own fund. And the purpose of that is to help make our bond, our ability to pay our bonds back more stable. There are other mechanisms that we'll talk about in later items that involve insurances, but this is just something that we can do internally to help show our investors or potential investors into our bond that we are stable enough, that we have set money aside in case something happens, that we can continue to make our bond payments. It is a discretionary fund, so you're gonna, if you approve, you would move the five twenty-five into a fund that's been created, Fund Fifty-One, and at any point in the future, if council decides they need that money for other legal water revenue-related expenditures, so anything to do with the water fund, you can still use the funds for that purpose. But in the event that we don't need to use those funds, it would sit there, and we also have the option to add money to it through revenues at the end of every fiscal year if council so chose. That would be part of the budget process, to continue to allow those funds to grow in case the city ever ran into a problem with paying back their bonds. That's about as technical as I can get. If you have any other questions, we have other individuals in the audience that can help.
I have a question, if I may. That is coming out, the enterprise fund, correct?
Correct, water.
It's not the general, the general fund, the enterprise fund, okay.
And it will stay a water fund.
It'll stay water. And then, yes, okay, thank you.
Okay. So five dash two, is a Report and Recommendation Budget Amendment, Creation of a Rate Stabilization Fund. Okay, now if you look at this, if it's on page sixty-seven, I just have a question. Why isn't this financed by a finance director? Why, are you doing the finances now?
Yes, I believe that city manager Nathan Olson sent out an email back when there was a transition of staff, that I would be taking over the role on an interim basis until we found a replacement.
Okay, that young man that came in last month, last council meeting, that we got introduced to, he wasn't the finance, he wasn't...
He is part of our bond team, he is not an employee of the city of Lemoore.
Okay. Okay, who authorized the establishment of this new fund?
Nobody, that's why we're here tonight, to get permission from council to do this rate stabilization.
What hits me is when you, you take something out of someone, you're putting it somewhere else, and then after that, it's like moving... Why now?
So as we discussed earlier in the study session, per bond council, a rate stabilization fund is a way to basically help support your bond and your ratings, so if you have a, say, a decrease in revenues that year, you have this rate stabilization fund that's set aside so you can level out your payments. It basically helps take some risk out of it. Again, so basically, if you have an account that's, you know, water, water, water cash assets, all we're literally doing, it'll still be in that same account, there's gonna be another line item that designates this as a rate stabilization fund. This money doesn't, it sits there. It just has its own name.
Sorry, I just want to be clear, it's its own fund. So in the budget, we have Fund Fifty, which is our water fund. It's any revenues that are generated due to water service or anything related to our water systems come into their own fund. They are not commingled with the general fund. They can only be used for water... come into their own fund, they are not commingled with the general fund, they can only be used for water-related purposes. We would be creating, upon your approval, Fund Fifty-One. It would be a brand-new number we've never used before, it's its own pot, for lack of a better term. So we would be taking money out of the water reserves that currently sits in Fund Fifty, and move it to Fund Fifty-One. Um, that, that budget, that fund, um, can still be used for whatever water-related purpose you'd like. It's just kind of like setting up a separate savings account. So that way, if something happens and you need money to draw from for an emergency purpose, it's there to do that. So that way, we don't forget, five years from now, that five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we should have held aside in the water fund for this purpose.
I'm just saying, council needs to hear from CPA on bond, you know, have some experience with bond, bond company or something.
We have, uh, members of our team in the audience that can help, we have the underwriter here, and we have members of our municipal advisors here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Ken Decker with Del Rio Advisors. So, a- again, to be clear, the money's staying in the water fund. It's simply set aside as a credit positive, because it's seen as a reserve that you could tap into to help stabilize water revenues in the event of a shortfall. And it's seen as a credit positive by the rating agencies and by the bond investors as part of a credit package. And so, again, this is something you could choose not to do, um, and the money would stay in your operating fund and it won't change anything. If you move it to the rate stabilization fund, you're just designating it as an emergency pot in the event you need it. We are not planning to have to use it, we don't believe you'll have to use it, but in the event of a shortfall in revenues, particularly as I discussed earlier, extended drought period where revenues drop off significantly, that pot of money would be used and could be deposited as revenues to maintain your legal covenants on the bonds. And that's really why we're, we're proposing to set aside the dollars.
Okay, i- if I may, um, this right here, we're asking for thirty million, and, and this is gonna be, we'll be done with this if we got this? Would we be done with this by, uh, twenty forty-nine?
Yes, the, the bonds are a thirty-year bond.
Thirty-year, okay, bond, okay.
Can I ask a, a question real quick to actually to staff? I, I do recall, did we or do we not just have an increase in our, on our water rates?
Yes, we had, we passed, successfully passed a two eighteen hearing for water rates. And that was all the lead-up to make sure we had the financial backing to support the bond. So this is something that's been in works for over two years.
So we, we asked, we asked for a, a increase in rates to help prepare, to ask for more money from a bond?
Yes, when we went to the bond hearing, to the two eighteen hearing, we laid out the bond requirement, and that was one of the main drivers in raising the rates, was we knew we had a thirty-million-dollar, um, capital expenditure coming up. So this has been in the works for multi-years, and it's finally coming, coming home.
If I may, I, I just wanna reiterate sort of the point of view from a different perspective. It feels like to a lot of people in the community that we ask them to pay more into a water rate so that we could then go back and ask for more money from them in terms of a bond. And it, for a lot of people, it feels like a double punishment. And I would just like to know how I might address my constituents when they come to me with that question.
If, if I may, um, again, Ken Decker, um, so, so the answer to that question is no. What happens is you raise water rates in order to afford to repay the debt, right? So you're only raising the rates one time, but you have to raise rates to a certain level to be able to borrow the thirty million that you need in order to fund your project. You're not asking them to raise the rates again because you're doing the bond. You raise the rates, put them in place, that provides sufficient revenue to repay the debt obligation when it's issued. So you're raising rates one time through the two eighteen process in order to pay back the debt service, because you need the thirty million now to do your projects.
So kinda like prepaying a visa, where you prepay ahead of time so that you can then spend what you just put into it?
You're not prepaying either, because you've established a series of rate increases that were over a five-year period. I think you're into the third or fourth year, fourth year of those rate increases. The rates are now sufficient to be able to support a thirty million, the repayment of a thirty-million-dollar bond issue. And you need the money now in order to move forward on the project. So you're not double-dipping the community at all, you're simply establishing prudent rates, because you knew you had these capital projects to finance.
And this is common practice throughout municipalities to do this, is that it correct, Steve?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open it to public comment.
Tom Reed, ten sixty, private, Limor. Uh, my question about the rate stabilization fund is this. Do we need that because it affects our rating, which is now an A-plus rating? If we don't have the rate stabilization fund, will that rating drop to an A or an A-minus?
Good question.
Right.
To respond, I was sure, the process, uh, city attorney. Yeah, so it was one factor in their consideration. If you decide not to do that, would it impact the rating? I, I don't, I do not know the answer to that question. I, it probably unlikely, because again, you've got plenty of revenues as forecast in the pro forma period to, to maintain your debt service coverage and repay those debts. This is simply a, an additional benefit, it gives the city a little bit of flexibility down the road. Is it a factor in their credit rating decision? I believe they, they knew about it, we discussed it, but is it a factor that would change the rating should you not do it? I, I don't know the answer. Eric, could you, this is our underwriter from Stiefel, Eric McKee.
Good evening. Uh, I agree with Ken. We, i- i- it was a factor that we talked about with S and P. Um, it is common practice for municipalities to do this. And I think, uh, to address Councilmember Blair's comment before, uh, one of the purpose of this rate stabilization fund is actually to help you stabilize the rates. So in an event where, you know, revenues really do decline, this will actually help you going back to your voters to not ask them to raise rates. So that's the purpose of this, that's the flexibility.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yes, so, um, we, we, uh, worked with staff to establish this five hundred and twenty-five-thousand-dollar number. It roughly provides a certain amount of coverage to meet your legal covenants. And so in a really bad situation where, for some reason, revenues really go down, you can draw from this fund, and that gets counted from a legal standpoint as revenues, to meet your legal covenants. So, um, you know, it's not restricted, as we said before, but you can draw on that money. You wouldn't necessarily have to raise rates. If you didn't have that money in the rate stabilization fund, and for whatever reason, you, um, you know, didn't have enough money, you would, accord with the bond documents, you'd have to raise rates. You have, that's, that's one of the requirements in the, in, in the legal documents. So this helps you prevent that situation.
So we asked our, we asked our public to pay more in water bills and water rates. Increase the water rates so that they pay more, so that we could get a bond, so that that way they won't have to pay more later.
I think that they're separate issues, um, but first, you went to your constituents to raise rates in order to afford the bond. And we have worked with staff on a pro forma model to make sure that this is an affordable bond. And as we demonstrated, the coverage is strong. Um, it's hard to predict what can happen in the future. So this is just a measure, um, that's common practice for municipalities to set up in order to prevent a bad scenario from occurring, and then having to go back to your rate payers to increase rates.
Because we already went to them to ask to increase rates to pay for this in the hopes that by getting this, we hopefully won't have to raise the rates later, because we already asked them to get this by raising their rates, and now we're gonna cross our fingers by doing this, that we won't raise the rates again by doing this.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
If I may, um, my name is Teresa Hoirano, um, I actually appear, uh, in front of council, uh, with different council members, but we, as bond, uh, the bond attorney firm, we have been working with staff, uh, for over a year, almost two years. And I would like to address the question of, did you raise rates for the bond? I think there, as, uh, the city manager alluded, I think that, if I may, expand on that. You raised rates so that you ca- the city has a compliance order to build the project. And that came first. And the city is required capital to finish the project in order to comply with an order from the state. And so in order to finance that project, you would have to raise rates in any event, but you can't raise rates fast enough to get the cash, to build the project in order to be on a timely basis, to meet the environmental regulation, uh, regulation, uh, compliance standards. And so therefore, the financing mechanism is being provided. How can we raise rates at a level that is acceptable to constituents? That's when the rate study was conducted, and that's why the bonds was coming up as, as a financing mechanism. And, um, and so the rates study and the rates were recommended was in light of what can be the best rate possible to support the financing of the project. The bonds is just a mechanism so that you can build the project.
Just a question then? Then we could just not raise rates at all and not have that additional project then? And not have to worry about rates or bonds or anything, if we just didn't keep doing projects we can't afford to do?
Well, the, the issue, Ms. Blair, with this one is in twenty fourteen, so going back over four years ago, the state issued the city with a non-compliance order. Prior to putting funds together, so we don't have a choice, we are under, we have to get compliant with the law. If not, we start imposing penalties, um, against the city. So we are non-compliant with the drinking water standards right now for TTHMs. Our total trihalomethanes are too high, we have a deadline. We've gotten several extensions, and we're trying to push this thing to the, to the final. But this started back in twenty fourteen, long before anybody sitting up here, even besides Mr. Neal, was here. So, so, and prior to that, the city of Lamore has not raised rates in twelve years since then. And even after the end of our cycle of raises over the four-year period, we'll still be in the median range of every surrounding community around us, in what our rate payers pay for their water.
You, you just caught my attention with something you stated. So we are currently not in compliance with our TTHMs at the same time that you're asking us to give you a raise.
Yes.
Okay.
Is it, is it likely that without this bond, we'd see price increases a lot more than they were the last time, pretty drastic, if, if, if we had to te- uh, fix our TTHMs?
They would be more drastic, because right now, we're, we're spreading this out, um, to get some money influx, and we're paying it off over thirty years without the bond. We'd have to pay cash, so I'd have to come up with thirty million dollars in cash, at least twenty-two million by next June.
Got it.
That's, that's really the brunt of it. We don't have that kind of capital.
With all due respect, most of our citizens don't have that kind of capital to keep having increases in their water rates either.
What I'd also like to say is our citizens, I know a lot of my constituents is telling me, they want good drinking water. I know my kids do, but people want good drinking water. And our infrastructure has aged. It, it's, this TTHM problem's happening throughout the whole state of California. I guarantee you, 'cause I know a little bit about it, so, um, it's, it's not something that just somebody, i- i- it's due to the age of your infrastructure, and, and it's time that we have, anyway, I'll stop there, thank you.
Well, if we can maneuver bun- funding around enough to give increases in people's salaries, then I would imagine we can get creative in finding other ways to fund projects and keep putting it on the backs of the poorest among us by raising their water rates over and over again.
Okay, okay, thank you, Ms. Blair, and thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
Can we get a motion on this, or?
Make a motion to
any other public?
Any other public comment? Okay, back to the council. Can I get a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve the creation of the rate stabilization fund in support of the twenty nineteen water bond in an amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Councilman Brown gave a first, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lyons is second, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote no. Okay. Five dash three, report and recommendations adopt a resolution of twenty nineteen oh four and twenty nineteen oh five. A resolution adopting tax advantage, bonds, post-insurance compliances, procedures, procedures, and talking related action, taking related actions and resolutions adopting and taking related actions, adopting and taking, and continuing disclosure, compliances, procedures, and talking related actions, Spirit?
I'm back. So item five dash three is another item related to the water bond, um, and I'm actually gonna turn it over to Ms. Hoirano. She has more of the technical, um, experience in explaining why we need this in order to move forward with the bond.
Councilman Mayor, council members, um, so forgive me for even the title of it being a little bit jargon-ish. But just to put it as simple as possible. The bonds that are being proposed and issued will be what we call publicly offer tax exempt bonds. The city hasn't really issued, new issue, uh, issue bonds in a while, but you do have currently outstanding some successor agency bonds, um, and successor agency bonds, and they are, they are tax exempt. And what that means is, means that the bondholders, the investors that purchase these bonds, they, the, um, when the city pay interest or the successor agency pays interest on the successor agency bonds, the bondholders' earnings on the interest, their interest portion of their earnings do not, uh, are not, um, subject to federal income tax, in a general way. Why is that? That is because the federal government has decided some time ago that that would provide incentive for investors to buy municipally, uh, uh, bonds that are issued by local governments. And the local government, it become, because it becomes attracted to investors, the local government has the ability to issue bonds, to borrow money at a lower interest rate than otherwise a corporation, or you and I can go out and borrow. And so it is an advantage by the federal government that gives to local, uh, federal government to give local municipal entities an advantage of, of, um, for its borrowing to encourage the building of infrastructure, infrastructure project, some, like what we're, we're engaging right now. And, but there's always an ex- in exchange for that. Because of this advantage that the federal government is giving the municipalities, the tax law also imposes certain rules that the local government must abide by to, in order to keep these bonds as tax exempt. And those rules are, some of them are, um, you have to abide by at the, at the issuance of the bonds, and also there are reporting rules and other rules that the city and the issuer must follow throughout the term of the bonds. They are, well, they're rules that mainly, really frankly, are best practices. For example, that you go, when you go out to borrow the bonds, you have a reasonable expectation that you will use down the bond proceeds. In this case, um, your reasonable expectation to use down, to use down money diligently is that you have a compliance order that you must fa- comply with in twenty twenty. There are also, you need to, for example, keep track of the spending of the bonds and, um, and do the reporting necessary to the IRS every, uh, every, every five years. So those are, uh, sorry, to, uh, 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 come up with what's called arbitrary rate report every five years. So a lot of requirements that are really best practice, uh, practices anyway. And so, um, and, uh, about ten years ago now, the IRS has decided that they would like to further encourage, uh, local governments who do issue tax exempt bonds, to, um, adopt these procedures, to be mindful of the fact to, uh, that they need to follow these rules. So literally, when we issue the bonds, uh, at the closing, uh, we will file on behalf of the city, city will have to file with the IRS, a, a form, what we call eighty thirty eight G, telling the IRS, hey, we're now issuing these bonds as tax exempt bonds for the IRS records. And there is a li- a box there, that, uh, that ha- the city has a checkmark, which says that they have, uh, adopted a, a set of procedures, uh, saying, uh, basically, uh, laying out that we will comply with the, uh, tax rules relating to these tax exempt bonds. So that is the first set of, uh, 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 procedures that was, uh, in front of you today. And like I said, it's, it's a little, in order for, for us to put that checkmark on the IRS form, we, you know, we asked the council to approve that resolution relating to post-issuance, uh, tax compliance procedures. Now, a few years ago, um, sorry, because these are also publicly offered bonds. There, when we go out, when a municipality go out and borrow, um, and issue bonds, there are two ways to sell the bonds. One way is you sell it to a private bank, um, or one or two limited amount of investors. Those are what we call private placements. The other way is to go out to the market and allow these bonds to be sold to public investors and similar to, um, you know, placing, uh, uh, you know, what you envision as Wall Street. These allow, uh, you and I, for example, to go out to a broker and say, I would like to buy some Lamore bonds. Those are, become publicly traded bonds. Those have become publicly traded bonds. And because these are publicly traded bonds where investors can buy them, the city is, must prepare disclosure to the market. And that is, in your later action, you will be asked to approve it, a preliminary official statement, and that is the document, as we talked about in the study session, that will be the first, the, on the preliminary one, what you, you imagine is IPO, the initial offering, that is the offering document that the investors will look at. But subsequent to that, be, because these bonds will be out and traded in the market for some years to come, so long as it's outstanding, there, the, the municipal issuer, in this case, the city, is prom, is gonna have to also agree to periodically give disclosure, update its disclosure about its water system and its water system finances. At the most base level, it is agreed that you will agree, the, the city will agree to annually file your audit of financial statement onto a repository site, what we is now Emma, call Emma, where the investors and actually anybody in public can go and take a look at your continued disclosure report, and you'll see the city's financial statements. You will also see certain updates on the water system finances, a, and all of those updates are, you know, taken from tables that's currently in the official statement. So anyway, the, the SEC also, you will agree to that, and the SEC also sort of copy the IRS and say, hey, it is a good idea for, and they encourage, you're not required to, but it is, they do encourage cities to adopt a similar procedure, so, it's akin to the post-issuance compliance procedures, to adopt the procedures, basically reminding ourselves that we have to comply with the continuing disclosure rules and ha, set forth a good continuing disclosure practices. That is also something, in addition to being, being a, a best practice, Steeple, for example, your underwriter, us underwriter, basically the people who market your bonds who go out and be in the middle person that sells your bonds to the public in the first instance, they are, they view it as favorable for their marketing purposes. It, it helps, it actually does help you sell the bonds to have a set of procedures like these in place. And so that's why this resolution, the second resolution is in front of you for the city council to consider and adopt the post-issuance continuing disclosure policy as well.
Okay. I have a question. We're had subject discussion, it says the city and the city's related public entities issue bonds from time to time, including tax exempt bonds. The interest on which is exempt from federal income tax and bonds sold through public offerings. Now, can you expound on public offerings, how do that work much more clear? I got what you had said, but more intent or is this straightforward?
Um, that means that the public investors can buy. You're not selling the bonds to just one entity, to one single bank.
Okay. Now, I know we have different types of bonds, like we have, we were just talking about in study session about water bonds. Now, this right here, what is this bond consistent of?
This, you're, you, the, the post-issuance compliance policy and the, uh, post-issuance continuing disclosure, it doesn't limit you to these set of bonds. So once adopted, they can apply to all your, all your other bonds. This is, this, this doesn't, you know, in of itself, this particular action doesn't increase cost or decrease cost, it is almost like best practice and it, it, uh, once you do this, next time, if you decide two, three, four years later, you will issue other bonds for other purposes, these procedures stay in place and apply as well.
How, how's the interest rate look for us? Have you looked at the interest rate on this?
Those would be the, the finest.
So this is preliminary because the interest rates move, but we expect the cost of funds for the third year borrowing to be below 4.3 percent, and that has a cushion in there. But where rates are at, that's likely where you'll be.
Thank you.
I have a question, because we're talking about procedures and best practices and, and if this goes out to the public, do we have any procedures or practices that would limit or disclose if anybody working for the city or had worked within the city within like a certain period, had been purchasing bonds at a high rate? At a smaller level, that's essentially what people, you know, when you talk about lobbying, and there's usually a cool-off period for lawmakers because they kind of have an inside track to these sort of things going on. Do we have any regulations in place or any procedure in place that would limit or prevent any employees or at least disclose that if that became a possibility, where a lot of them were bought up by somebody related to the city?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, you're talking about, you're talking about generally what's in the news, for example, you're about, talking about Martha Stewart some years ago, insider trading type scenario where, for example, the city know of information that is not yet public, and you, the, the, what's in place right now is really securities law, federal securities law. And that's part of the reason why it's important for the city to comply with the continuing disclosure every year, to make sure the public is aware of what's public, you know, public information to continue to update. If anybody, anybody has insider information that is not yet public, that hasn't been posted, and you cause, you know, you, you trade on something because of that information, it, you know, and it caught the federal, uh, uh, the, uh, you know, the federal enforcement's eye, then it is federal securities law that will come in. But that's outside of.
But for us, we don't have anything else, is the answer. Okay.
The only thing we have is a Form 700, I think you have to, if I may.
Yeah, yes, Form 700s would require you to provide any information regarding assets that you hold in the city.
Okay. Well, thank you. Back to the council. Can I get a motion by anybody in council on this one?
Make a motion to, to adopt resolution 2019 tack oh four.
Excuse me, I thought I did already. Did I open it to the public? Separate.
Yeah, you've sent it to.
Okay.
I'm so sorry, I apologize.
All right. Public, anybody want to expound on this? Back to the council. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir. I apologize for that, I should.
No, no problem.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2019 tack oh four, adopting tax advantage bonds, post-assurance issuance compliance procedures and resolution number 2019 tack oh five, adopting continu, continuing disclosure, disclosure compliance procedures.
Okay.
And I'd like to second with everything you guys said.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote no. Okay, down to five dash four.
Okay, this is my last item tonight, just so y'all know. So this is the last item on the agenda for this evening related to the water bond that we've been talking about all night. This is the official action by council to allow us to move forward and address how we're going to accrue the revenue from the bonds. So I'm going to invite Ken Decker up here, our municipal advisor, he's gonna explain to you more about the preliminary official statement and the indenture that are included in your packet so that you may ask questions.
Ken Decker, Del Rio Advisors, municipal advisor with the city. So there are, it was a phone book that we provided to the council. In those documents are the indenture, indenture of trust, that basically governs all terms and conditions of the bonds being issued. It will also govern all the terms and conditions for issuing additional bonds of the water system should you need that down the road, establishes your rate covenant, governs how the trustee handles your bonds as far as the bond proceeds and the flow of funds throughout the, the water system and how it flows to repay the debt service on the bonds. You'll also receive the preliminary official statement that is, like I said earlier, the primary marketing document that will be sent to investors. It is a near-final form, we're making a few minute, last-minute tweaks on it, and we're hoping to do a due diligence call with the city next week, get that to the printer shortly. And once that's out in investors' hands, there'll be a pre-marketing period, and Steeple's job will be to sell those bonds to mom-and-pop retail investors, professionally managed retail, all the institutional funds like Benham and, and, I'm drawing blanks his name, get tired, but there's just a, a ton of mutual funds out there that also buy these municipal bonds for their tax exempt funds. So, again, that is the primary marketing document, we're asking approval of that tonight. We've established the not-to-exceed amount at 35 million, I know that's a high number. However, that number is expected to be around 27 or 28 million, again, because right now bond investors like the premium bonds, as we discussed, so we're issuing less than 30 million, but should that have shifted during the process, we actually would have maybe issued more than 30 million, like 32 million to get you 30 million in proceeds. So again, it just depends on the marketing of the bonds, but right now, we do expect that to be around 27 million and some change, but we're establishing parameters of 35 million. Again, as was stated earlier at the work, study session, we did receive an A+, we did receive a bond insurance commitment, and just to give you some idea on that, the bond insurance commitment that, that I discussed earlier and that's in the staff report, we'd assume would come in at 50 basis points, that's half a percent of the total debt service on the bonds. That actually came in at 12 and a half basis points, and that was mainly due because of the better rating, that underlying rating that the city received. The surety bond premium was estimated at 3%, it actually came in at 1.85%. So right there, there's about $240,000 of savings that were realized just on the payment of the insurance premiums to the insurance company. And the way this works is the insurance company wraps the debt service, so if there's ever a default situation, they would step up and pay the bond investors, and then ultimately you would deal with them to make sure they ultimately got repaid. So they're kind of acting as the middleman on these things. One thing I, I failed to mention earlier during the work session and was reminded, these bonds are considered or can be designated by the city as green bonds, and what that means is the projects associated with this, so it could be energy retrofit projects, it could be clean water, safe drinking water, any of those sorts of projects can be considered green. It's a, it's a new and burgeoning marketplace in the municipal market, and again, it may attract some additional investors, so we may consider doing this as a green bond. We're talking to staff about that right now, and I think our recommendation is these are clean water projects, it makes sense that they would be green in nature. And in addition to that, Build America Mutual, who is the bond insurer, has, has already pre-approved these for their Green Star program, which means they have a designation where they've reviewed the credit and they feel comfortable that they can establish their green, these are green bonds for purposes of their insurance policy. So it's another benefit to the project that I failed to mention earlier, and I apologize to the council for that, but just wanted to make sure you were aware that we do believe these could be green bonds and marketed as such, and also have this Green Star designation by Build America Mutual, the bond insurer, which is a good positive news. And we're hoping that, that what that does, and I've done a couple of these green bonds in the last couple of months, last few months, that it is sort of a new burgeoning area of the marketplace and could attract some buyers that normally wouldn't look at some of these municipal bonds. So it's a net positive. And with that, like I said, I apologize for the phone book, but the team's worked very hard to establish all of these things and put everything in place so you could access the money by the, in March, so you could start working on your project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I noticed that you made, can I comment?
Go ahead. Thank you.
I, I noticed that you had commented, that you had hastily forgot something to mention to us right now, and I appreciate you kind of slipping it in there. I just feel hesitant voting for bonds, knowing that there may be more of the things that you forgot to mention, and, and we're kind of hastily putting it together, and that was just one example of that, and, and that's why I'm not supportive of these. Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking at this, at this adoption of resolution number 2019 oh six, resolution of the city council of the city of Lemoore authorizing insurance sales of delivery of water revenue bonds. The execution of delivering of an indenture of this, how is this connecting? How are we making these resolutions to put ourselves back in the nature? I can understand we need bonds, but how about grants? Have we looked up anything on grants? Any great, any state grants are out there?
Yeah, so part of all this is looking at grant money and one of the, we're not a disadvantaged community, so a lot of the grant funding isn't available to us for these projects.
Okay.
So, no.
Absolutely, thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, and I was, I was just gonna state that, that this has been a very long undertaking by the, by the city, obviously, because the, the planning for and adoption of the 218 process was a very long process. And in addition to that, this, this bond issue, since we briefed the council, when was the?
March.
March of 2018, has been almost a year in the work. So we've been preparing these documents and multiple conference calls and rating presentations. This has been a very long and, and interesting process. And, and I do want to state too that this green bond designation is very new to the marketplace, and it's only been the last couple of months that these, that any issuers have gone out with these sort of green bond designations, and so people are sort of testing the market for that. There's nothing says that we have to do this as a green bond, and bond council will be reviewing that designation to make sure that we comply with it.
Okay.
And again, it doesn't require any ongoing compliance by the city of any sort. The green, the BAM Green Star designation does require the city to provide certification that the bond proceeds are actually being spent on the water projects that are anticipated. So, and that does not, not create any sort of burden to the city. But I do want to state that this has been a very long and complicated process to get us to this point today.
Understand. And you guys did an awesome presentation, I just wanted to let you know that. And only, only thing I have to say, I'm just addressing, I'm just trying to look out for our city, I don't want to get, keep our hands tied up in other things, so you guys just, I respect, and so I just hope you feel where I'm going with this. Okay, thank you. Counsel, you guys want to open it to the public? Do anyone of you guys want to speak on this? Okay, Mr. Reed?
Tom Reed, 10-6 Department of Lemoore. So one key word in there is the issuance of bonds. Now, if you don't approve this, you're not gonna issue bonds. If you don't issue bonds, you're not gonna build a project. And if you don't build a project, you're gonna be in non-compliance. And if you're non-compliant, you're gonna get some bills from the state saying, you're gonna have to pay this. So this has been a long process, it's been put into place, it's a lot of legalese. If you're not comfortable with it, you know, I've said more than once, I'm glad you're there and not me, that's why I didn't run. But that being said, sometimes you have to take a leap of faith. And you either trust the work that staff has done and the people that you're paying to do this work to put it all together. And if you don't do it, then maybe you need to consider whether you need to be sitting on this council or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
May I come in? I think that was an excellent point by Mr. Reed, absolutely. It, it was a long process, and it takes a long time to develop that sort of sense of trust with staff, and I had developed that sense of trust with our previous finance director, but right before the election, she was let go. So I don't have that person to go back to and ask, so it's a little hard to just randomly take it as it goes when that staffer that I had trusted with the bonds and has, was presenting stuff I felt comfortable with is suddenly no longer here.
Anyone else in the council? Can I get a motion from the council?
Yeah, I've, I've been drinking Lemoore tap water, straight from the tap, for 35 years, and maybe one of the reasons I don't have cavities is because it's high in TTHMs, I don't know, but I'm hoping one day my kids can continue to drink water straight from the tap, and I'm, I'm happy to make a motion for item five dash four, resolution number 2019 dash 06, it's a resolution, the city council of the city of Lemoore authorizing the issuance, sale and delivery of water revenue bonds.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Billingsley. Can I get a second?
Clarification. Clarification, that's a motion to approve.
Yes. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, let's go to five dash five, reporting recommendations, council member lays on appointments of regional board and committee. Osen?
So, good evening, mayor and council members. This was accustomed to be brought back by some council members to maybe reconsider some of the appointments to the boards and commissions. So with that, I'll turn it over to council.
Okay, there was a slight miscommunication between myself and, and Mr. Brown when it came to the Sigma Committee. There's a lot going on on that committee here in the.
There's a lot going on, on that committee here in the next couple of years and after speaking with Mr. Brown, we determined that he's very fitting to stay on there and, and I'd be his backup. So, that was one of the changes that we wanted to make and I wanted to address up here.
One thing I'd like to state is, is that, because I was on the CART and I was on the backup for K-CAG and, and vehicle abatement for past two years. Recommendation is, is the reason why they put them back to back is so the same person can attend all the meetings. So, what we have is we have CART at 3:30, I believe it's the third, I went to it, I should remember it, but...
Fourth.
The fourth, the fourth, fourth Thursday of the month. At 3:30 to 4:30 approximately, 4:30, K-CAG starts right up. So, you're sitting up on the dais, you're right there. And then, right after, right after CART or K-CAG, vehicle abatement every two months, it, 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 it meets. So, I just thinking is, is whoever, you know, you're going to have one council member walking in the door and the other one walking out the door. So, just recommendation that whoever's on K-CAG or CART be on K-CAG and vehicle abatement. You kill, I shouldn't say the word kill, three birds with one stone, but kind of sort of, that's what I'm wanting to do, wanting to present out there. You know, just kind of streamline things a little bit, you know?
So, I'm trying to keep track of the changes on paper. So, who, who then would be the primary for CART, K-CAG, and Kings County vehicle abatement?
Well, Eddie's got two of them as of right now and I've got just the, the CART. So, Eddie, if you're willing to take CART, we can turn it around to our, I'll be your backup on all three of those and you can be the primary.
Take CART? You want me, you're saying you, you're going to switch from CART? You don't want, you don't want to be CART? You want to be, you want to be backup on CART?
K-CAG.
We can do that.
And one thing too, just want to let people, everybody know is, is kind of when I put my name down on this, I was just kind of letting everybody, you know, to see if anybody else wanted to put in for things, but I'll jump in anywhere needed.
Okay.
I have no problem. I don't care, I can do it or if somebody else wants to do it or I'll, I have no problem. I do waste recycling, whatever's needed. I mean, I did it before, do it, you have no problems.
Do you want to do the backup on those? If you, if you want it? I'm not...
Oh, yeah. My thing is, is as we're discussing here, I have no problem doing it. I know, I'm, I'm good with that. But I don't, if, if you have, my thing is, if, you know, if you want to do it...
Well, you look like you're on a lot of other stuff. That's what we're going to have.
Yeah. Well, the only one that really I'm on, it really meets is mosquito abatement. I mean, I can trade you mosquito abatement for...
It's like playing cards, huh?
Yeah, well, that's, and, and believe it or not, if you go back, this is kind of the way the council did it before, I mean, years back, they sat up here and they talked about this, you know? And the other thing too is people, you know, it's people's business, so, but, I mean, if you're fine with it...
No, I was just asking if you wanted to be on it because I think Mr. Neal is going to miss it a few times here coming up because I know he's got some scheduled stuff.
But even in a year from now, we can go through and we can, I mean, we're not committed to two years. I mean, at council, if they want, is that correct statement? We can...
You, you go ahead and take that one.
We can, we can say in a year from now, we can, we can revisit this.
Yeah, you can have it.
Okay. You want me, I'll take lead on it.
Go ahead.
Okay, and then Oliver's report back to council.
Uh huh.
Okay.
So, so which one was that?
That's K-CAG, right? CART, K-CAG, and, and vehicle abatement.
So, you're the primary?
I'm primary and...
I'll be the backup.
You'll be the backup. Okay.
Okay.
Who's on first?
Who's on first? And, and then...
And then the water one also, Bill.
Yeah, I'm on Sigma. That's, I'd be out in the audience anyway. I mean, so I'll take Sigma. I can take those four and, and, and waste recycle. I can do that. If I do those and then somebody can take mosquito, if you want, it's your call, Eddie.
Okay. I'm on waste recycle, you know?
Right. What do you, what do you want?
And I'm on Indian Gaming. I was, I was the primary on that one. I think I got that one on, on Indian Gaming.
Right. So, you got Indian Gaming?
Uh huh.
Well, you're the, you're the alternate.
Yeah, but I'm supposed to be primary on that one.
Oh, so, so you're going to be primary on Indian, okay. You getting all that there, senior manager? So...
Yeah, I'll do a, I'll do a recap when we're done talking, just to make sure I captured it.
Because if somebody wants to take over mosquito abatement, I have no problem doing that. Somebody want to take over mosquito?
Well, since you guys are both staring at me, yeah, let's do it.
Okay, like mosquitoes? Hey, you know what though? That is a good, they've been doing a lot of good work in the City of Lemoore.
Absolutely. I'm just joking, I was the alternate on that, so let's do it.
Who will be the alternate? Who will be the alternate for the Kings mosquito abatement district? I'll do it, sir. Okay, so I have for changes on the Indian Gaming Local Community Benefit Committee, I have Mayor Neal as primary and Chad Billensley as the alternate. They're flipping positions. Kings County Area Public Transportation Authority, K-CAPDA, I have council member Brown as the primary, council member Lyons is the alternate. Kings County Association of Governments, K-CAG, I have council member Brown as the primary, Stuart Lyons as the alternate. Kings County Vehicle Abatement Committee, council member Brown as primary, Stuart Lyons as the alternate. And then Kings mosquito abatement district, council member Billensley is the primary, Stuart Lyons is the alternate. And then on the, the last one, the South Fourth King Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, I have Dave Brown as primary and council member Billensley as the alternate. Do I have consensus?
You get on Kings Waste Recycle? Or do you...
Are we changing that or?
I'll stay on Kings Recycle, yeah, I'll stay on that one. Kings Recycle, okay.
So, we're going to leave Kings Recycling alone?
Copy. I've been on that.
Okay. So, do I have consensus?
Yeah.
I guess. Okay. We will, we will update this list and city staff will email it out to y'all.
All right.
You need to say there's nothing to report on closed session.
And there's nothing to report on closed session? Any city council reports? Can we get requests from city council? Go with Mr. Billensley?
You're on the city council reports?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, like we just discussed, I went from my first Sigma meeting and there's a lot of moving parts there. I would have been happy to take it over, but there, like I said, there was a miscommunication between Mr. Brown and myself. So, I think it'll give me some time to go in there and, and learn. There's a lot to learn. Sustainable groundwater is the future and there's a lot to it. So, I appreciate Mr. Brown for, for stepping up for that. I'm excited to, to start making more of those meetings and learning a lot more and that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Lyons?
Yeah. So, I got to go to the Commission on Aging and there, there was a lot of interesting people there. I'll tell you what, Marlene Chambers, she's the, she's the chairman. She, she ran the meeting and old Bobby, she works in the, in the office there and they, they're having a problem with, what was it called? I wrote it down right here. On their match money. They're, they're having a lot of problems with their match money. I guess they, they're getting funding, but it's coming in the wrong way and so they're having a hard time spending it. And it seems like that was the topic of the discuss, the whole hour and a half that I was there. And then after that, the next day, I went to the Kings County Area Public Transit, the K-CAPDA, and it's got a new board. It's Mr. Ramirez from Hanford and Doug Verboen from the supervisor and Ms. Woolley from Avonel and myself and Joe Neves. And all items that were on the agenda, they all passed. And then I sat in for Mr. Neal at the Kings County Associated Governments Commission and the other one was the abandonment vehicle abatement service authority. And yeah, that was interesting. That really was. I'll tell you what, it was kind of fun doing it. All, all their agenda items passed easily, not a whole lot of discussion. But that's about all I have to report. There was a lot more than I expected.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown?
Just want to say that Kings County Commission on Aging, thank you for doing it. That's very important because what they do is they deal with, we have, we have what's called here in Lemoore is generations and they deal with Alzheimer, dementia. It's adult daycare. They, I think the last, I don't know, before that, I think they had 17 patients right here in Lemoore and they deal with, that's ginormous. And that match money they're talking about, that's what helps run generations. If that match money doesn't come, and that match money mostly comes from the county, you know, they, just like any other organization, they have to start cutting services. So, you know, it's very important for them to get that match money. That's about it. Thank, thank you, everybody. Thank, you know, appreciate staff, appreciate what everybody's doing, appreciate your hard work. That's all I got to say.
Okay. I have nothing to report out. It's, I think we had a great meeting. Oh, hold on just a minute. Excuse me.